This time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be consider approval of the minutes of the regular and special and work session meetings, and all of those were held November 22, as well as the truth and taxation hearing that was held on December 6. So the council does have the minutes of those four meetings. The, are there any corrections? If not, in one motion, we would accept a motion to accept.
So move.
Second motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to approve the minutes as they have been presented for those meetings. We'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We have four public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is on an ordinance that would amend the city charter for elected office and for the city attorney. So I will call on, you're going to conduct this?
Yes.
We'll call on city administrator Sharon Hansen to conduct this public hearing. Sharon?
Okay, just a review. On October 19, the Charter Commission met and considered revisions to two articles in the charter, one dealing with council member terms and also the terms of office and also the city attorney. The terms of office for council members aligns with state statute in terms of when a city council member term starts, and the city attorney language makes it more consistent with legal representation afforded to the client in case this, and in this case, the city. Notice of public hearing, which was required, was published on November 19 for tonight's public hearing, and I did include in the packet the public notice, the minutes from the Charter Commission. You also have a letter from the Charter Commission president in support, and then also the subsequent ordinance that would be adopted. For this particular action item, the recommended amendments to the Charter Commission must be adopted by council on a unanimous vote. And I do have, in addition to our city attorney, Dennis Simpson, our incoming city attorney, Pam Whitmore, is also online via Zoom if there are any questions regarding the charter amendments. So.
Sharon, we'll open up for any public input as part of this public hearing, either from the audience or from those at the council table. Is there any input?
I just have a quick question.
Go ahead, Jim.
So if we happen, because we don't meet till the second Tuesday of January, so if we happen to have to, for some reason, have an emergency meeting, I assume we'd swear those new people in before that, okay? We won't have a special swearing and ceremony the first Monday of January then, which is fine. I don't think we should.
Right. If we needed to, we could. Any other input as part of the public hearing?
If we close the public hearing?
Motion by Craig, seconded by John to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And passes. We'll now consider the ordinance. Are there any questions about the wording in the ordinance? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Russ.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes. Our second public hearing is the floodplain management ordinance amendment. This would be a public hearing on this, on this ordinance. Following the public hearing, we would consider the adoption of the ordinance. I will call on Jason Anderson, city engineer, to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. On August 23, the city council adopted an ordinance that amended Chapter 38, our floodplain management ordinance. The city worked with the DNR to utilize their model ordinance to make sure that we were meeting all federal standards. Recently, upon, and upon further review, the DNR staff advised that some language in our recently revised ordinance was now considered optional language. That language refers to regulatory floodplains. So the changes that are being presented to you now are striking references to this regulatory floodplain from the ordinance, as they are now considered above and beyond type of regulations. In practical terms, I guess staff thought that leaving that language in would make enforcing the floodplains in Marshall significantly harder because it expands the boundaries of the area that's regulated quite significantly. So if there's any questions, I can try to answer them, but that's, that's the purpose of this. There's also one other change where we changed the board of adjustment from the planning commission to the city council.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. We'll open up for public comment as part of this public hearing. Just, John?
Just note that Legislative and Ordinance Committee did review this on 22nd of November and recommended approval.
Thank you, John. Any other input? I would just say, Jason, thank you for your work on lots of back and forth with the DNR and others on really getting this issue probably resolved in a, in a way that's favorable for homeowners in the community. So thank you. Any other input as part of the public hearing?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig to close a public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Our third public hearing, this is a-
Do we have to adopt it?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Thank you. I will consider the adoption of the ordinance.
To approve.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. Motion passes. Now, our third public hearing, this is a public hearing, the ordinance that would amend the construction and maintenance and minimum size regulations. So with this tonight, Ilya Gutman, he will conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, my counsel. These are minor changes to the parking ordinance, but they were mostly brought by real life. So one, we allow a narrow driveway on the private property to save money. We require the wider sidewalk if the ordinance allows the cars to park right against the sidewalk so that there's a wide enough path to, for accessibility. And we also changed the ordinance to require that principal users are paid rather than before. It was just only accessible, accessory users that were required, be required to be paid. So they're real minor, but they will help. It went to the L and O, and it was approved, and it was introduced last meeting of the city council.
Okay. And thank you, Ilya. We'll open up for public comment as part of this public If there's no public comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
By John, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll now consider the ordinance. Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
I'll move. Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And motion passes. Thank you, Ilya. And then our final, final public hearing is a public hearing on the preliminary plat and approval of the preliminary plat for DG Marshall. Following the approval of the preliminary plat, which will follow the public hearing, we will consider the resolution that would adopt the final plat. I'll call on Jason Anderson, city engineer, director of public work, to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Included in the council packet, you've got a preliminary plat for DG Marshall addition, as well as the final plat. There's also the engineer's report on both in the packet. Essentially, what occurred here is that the developer purchased these two lots to construct their Dollar General store. It was determined at time, a couple months ago, when they went to the county to combine the lots into one, that there was an issue with the property description, and the county would not record. City staff worked with the developer to suggest the plat process, and we're here finalizing that plating process to properly combine the lots. I know there's been quite a bit of back and forth discussion between the surveyor, the county, the city attorney regarding some details of the plat, but in general, city staff has, has no concerns or issues with the plat as presented. We would recommend to approve it, and I guess I would allow for our city attorney to offer any comments if he's got any as well.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Dennis?
I've spoken to the surveyor most, as recently as late this afternoon. Plating process requires that anybody who has an interest in the property has to sign off on it, and that includes mortgage companies. There is a mortgage company from Arkansas that has a first mortgage against the property. They can either sign the plat, or they can sign a consent to plat. The consent to plat has been sent to the mortgage company for their signature. They'll sign off on it. Then late this afternoon, the surveyor indicated that there's a slight change in the legal description, because the legal description starts with a large parcel, except it pulls a bunch out, but at the end of legal description, it adds them back in. So they've just kind of consolidated the legal description and cleared it up. It's a three-page legal description right now. It's really hard to follow. They've consolidated, so you'll see a different legal description on the final plat, but it's moving towards completion.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Any input as part of this public hearing?
Is it appropriate for us to approve the final plat before it's actually final completed?
I don't think there's, there won't be any changes on the signatures on the plat. There will be a consent to plat, which is an attached document to the plat when it's filed. So it would be appropriate to approve it, subject to that contingent approval.
Okay. Any other input as part of the public hearing? Just motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. And now entertain a motion related to the approval of the preliminary plat that was discussed at the public hearing.
I move approval of the preliminary plat.
A second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda, to approve the preliminary plat for DG Marshall. Discussion?
I'm assuming that contains the contingent we just talked about.
That's on the final. I'll-
That's on the final.
I'll be on the final, yeah.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll now entertain a motion related to the approval of the final plat.
I move approval of the final plat, noting the changes or updates that council has, has discussed.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Russ. Discussion? Not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And that motion passes. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. We'll now move to the consent agenda. We have a number of items on the consent agenda this evening. We'll bring those up on the screen. And they include, consider the approval of employee retirement resolutions, consider the approval of a permit for alcoholic beverages at city-owned facilities, consider the approval of various 2023 liquor and tobacco license renewals, consider ordinance that would amend the qualifications and compensation. That would be an introduction, introduction of ordinance amending the chapter for imposition, the introduction of ordinance on the amendment for, related to grass and weeds on private property, the introduction of the ordinance amending a sign ordinance, the introduction of the ordinance or related to residential rental code and call for a public hearing, call for a public hearing regarding the authority to transfer unobligated tax increments, the acceptance of donations made to the Merit Center for 2022, the acceptance of donations made to Marshall Fire Department in fiscal year 2022, consider donations made to the Marshall Parks Department for 2022, consider the donations made for Marshall Fire Department Scholarship Fund, the acceptance of the donations for Marshall Community Services Department, and consider the approval of the raffle permit for Marshall Golf Club, consider the approval of the permit for the Pheasant's Forever Spring Banquet, consider the resolution entering into the MINDOT agreement regarding the agency delegated contracting process agreement, the authorization for the city administrator to negotiate purchase price with CenterPoint Real Estate Group, consider the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the capital funds, and finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Are there any items on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion?
Number 13, please.
Say the, say the number again.
13.
13. Any other item?
Number 22.
22 or 23?
Any other item?
23.
No, 20. I have 22 on mine.
Which, what, what's the agenda you're looking at?
23.
No, I mean, what's the top?
Mr. Minister, I printed mine out after Steve added 6.
The statement?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other item?
Mine's 22.
If not, number 23 and number 13 have been removed from the consent agenda. Is there a motion for the remaining items on the consent agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda with just the comment that if I did my math right, totally donations to the city are over $86,000. So that's a very generous community contributing to the city. So.
Is there a second to John's motion?
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig. Very good comments, and we'll need to acknowledge all of those very generous donations. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Okay, so agenda item number 13, introduction of the residential rental code and calling for a public hearing. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I stated in prior meetings, I think I was the only council member to physically be in attendance at these meetings. I think Mr. Lozinski was via Zoom, but I think we heard loud and clear from our landlords that they opposed any kind of a fee, that they wanted to be, and they were to cooperate with registering their properties and inspections and things like that. So my, I have a two-part question. I think before we bring this back to council, I think it should go back to ways and means. And I would also suggest that we maybe form a small committee with the landlords and get their input on this, because those are the ones that are going to be affected, and those are the ones that are going to, we're going to hear the loudest from. And, and I don't recall, I could be wrong, Jason, or Sharon, or Ilya, I don't recall ever talking about a fee for initial registration. And then, well, we're recommending $50 per property or per apartment? So if I, if I own a property with three apartments, is it one property?
Correct. It's one property, per building.
And, and a couple of landlords I talked to since Saturday, or Friday, since we got the packet, they don't ever recall this either. I talked to them about the inspection fee of $100 after some, none of them were opposed to that. They said, yeah, we should be fined if we don't fix it. They had more questions about the timing of such. If landlord said, what if I'm on vacation and I only get five days or 48 hours to fix it? I said, well, you should have a management company or somebody managing your properties to take care of it. He said, ideally, I should, but not all the time I do. But he said, I'm not sure if that timeframe. So I think we need to take a step back before we get this again, get their input, maybe go back to ways and means and, and get their input. I think, Ilya, we're bringing this forth to council and, and getting through it as a public hearing next month, and, and I won't be here. So I'm just saying, I want these things brought up tonight.
Thank you. I believe we did talk about this at the last Ways and Means Committee. I believe we did talk, discuss this thing in the Ways and Means Committee.
About the fee?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, there was discussion.
Because this, this fee-
Is that the one I missed?
Yeah, I think so.
You know, the other-
Fees and things, you have the one I missed?
Yes.
Okay, I missed that.
And this fee, just to confirm, this is just one time. So all renewals will be free. This is one time to set up basically an account just to cover the minimal administration cost. That's one-time fee. Before, it was every renewal. Now, it's just one time.
I understand that. And one of the landlords says, pardon my terminology, what the hell is that fee for?
Administrative.
No, we pay enough taxes that the city can do this for us?
So the-
And again, we're not talking a large amount of money. It's the principle of it. And I don't think we need any bad relations with landlords or anybody in this town. I think we need to, we need to focus on good community relations, and I think a $50 fee isn't going to break the city if we charge it or not.
I think the other point, though, is the, the action item that's proposed here is calling for a public hearing, and that's a public hearing that landlords and the other, the other party to this is the renters. And we haven't heard from the renters.
Correct.
We've had meetings with the landlords, multiple meetings with the landlords, but this will be an opportunity for not, for any interested party, landlords or the renters. Ultimately, the renters are the ones that do pay this fee.
And I'm not going to disagree with that, Mr. Mayor, but how are we going to notify the landlords? Again, this is your public meeting, and we'll take action in January. Are they going to be notified?
Well, the public hearing is always, there is a notice in the newspapers.
Right.
And we will probably contact, we may contact the Chamber of Commerce, I think.
I'd just like to see them contacted and get their input before we go forward with this.
If I, if I may jump in here, if the council wants to direct us to actually notify all of the landlords, I mean, we can certainly make that attempt. I would just point out that we, I feel like city staff and the city as a whole has really tried our, our best to accommodate the voices of the landlords, and we've held numerous meetings. We changed the program entirely from what we were originally presenting, which was a program that was required consistent renewals, consistent inspections on a regular basis, and we've essentially flipped a licensing program into a registration program with, just give us your contact information so we can get ahold of you if there are complaints. We've really, I think we've tried to hear them. We've tried to keep costs down. I think we've arrived at a mutually beneficial program, one that the city can administrate better, one that the landlords can tolerate better. We weren't as, I don't think we, as a staff, were planning to send out direct notification to anyone about the hearing that was coming up, but if the council does want us to do that, we certainly can. But I just wanted to point out that I do think that we've, we've really tried to, to hear people out.
And I'm not going to disagree with that, Jason. I think the city has worked extensively in trying to please everybody. And again, I just, I don't want this $50 to be, to oversee all of the good stuff we did.
John?
I just wanted to point out, one of the things we're trying to do some of this is to have the contacts, because right now, we don't have all the contacts for landlords. And, you know, that's part of the, kind of a catch-22 in this thing. We're trying to get that information as well, so we know who the landlords are in the community. And we know, you know, the major ones, larger apartments, things like that, but a lot of the smaller ones, we may not know, and that's partly what we're trying to do. So, you know, I think we're, you know, the fact that we're putting it in the paper and notifying it, putting it out on usual websites, you know, spread the word if they need to, but we're doing what we can do and required to do to get the public notice out. So.
And maybe we have an incentive that we, we, if we start at January 1 or after the public hearing, we start, for the first 90 days, it's free. After 90 days, you're going to pay a $50 fee to register your, your property. Simple as that. I mean, that's just my opinion, because I, and I won't be here in January, so I'm just stating my opinion and the people that I talked to today, or over the weekend, actually.
You can always try us at the public hearing, Russ, because you're, you're not up here. I'd love to see you out there.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this matter?
Here, we're, we're just calling for the public hearing now, so we're not really initiating any $50 fee or anything. So there's the public hearing, so.
And, and I understand that, Stephen, again, I'm just-
And from my standpoint, Russ, I concur. I don't like any more taxes at all. However, when I look at, you know, the landlord that called you and talked to you and said, well, you know, theoretically, I should have managed, but not always. If it was that landlord's personal house, he ain't waiting 48 hours or longer to get something fixed. He's going to act on it immediately. Residents expect the landlord to respond immediately. That's their house. They're renting. They expect that. So that's kind of a weak excuse from a landlord, because if it was their house and they were living in it, they wouldn't wait. They would expect something to be fixed right away. I mean, I would.
Exactly. And if it's a, you know, as we go through the public hearing, if, if the number's not 50, it's 25 for the first 90 days. I mean, they're, the beauty of being an elected official, if we make a mistake in the next meeting, we can fix it. And so I think that's good points to bring up at the public hearing, but at this point in time, I think, like Councilman Meister said, we're calling for the public hearing. We're not going to adjust the things as a public hearing. So, but good input.
Is, is there a motion?
So move.
Motion by Craig.
Second.
Seconded by John to call for a pub, introduce the ordinance and call for a public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number 23, which would be to authorize the city administrator to negotiate a purchase agreement for sale of property owned by the city to CenterPoint Real Estate Group. Jim?
I'm just curious, since we're selling property, if there's any more information we can get on this besides on the consent agenda?
The adjoining property owner, which is a local business owner, is working with this particular development group on additional development of his property. So there was discussion at the EDA level about looking at our small portion of land, and if you've driven by there, kind of familiar. It's not a large parcel.
Steve, can you pull it up? It took me a while to figure out where it was, but I finally did.
This, this property was purchased at the time when Halber Road went through, and it was basically a remnant property. It was part of the running property, but it was now on the other side of the road.
Yeah. Just, I just, I pulled it up, and it's to the public, what are you guys selling property for? Why is it on the consent agenda? So I just-
We, we at the same time had interests from another entity, but working with CenterPoint Development Group facilitates the local business owners' development. And as the packet contained, we don't have a, we have not signed any purchase agreement. Dennis, I think, just gave his first revision to me today, and we'll kind of see what that looks like and then bring that back to council. But it was more just to facilitate future development. development from the adjoining business owner, who is a local, a local business owner as well.
So we're not, and I'm fine if we don't, we're not requiring him to build anything. We're just gonna put this tax back on the tax rolls.
That's correct.
Which I'm perfectly fine with that. So I'd make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Jim. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Number 26 is a resolution that would approve changes in the 2023 fee schedule. With us tonight, Finance Director Carla Drown. Carla?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have the fee scheduled before you with multiple changes in it. It has gone to the Ways and Means Committee and they have approved it to come to full counsel for approval. We do have other staff here to answer any detailed questions you may have. Amen.
Okay. Any comments from the, or input from the Ways and Means Committee?
No, there was, as you could see, kind of a, quite a few changes, adjustments. We went through it by department and I think discussed the ones that were needed to be discussed and recommended approval.
Questions the council has?
Mr. Mayor, my question is, how did they come up with some of these? Because like shelter rent, it went up 100%. There's a couple of fees that went up 100% or more. And so I'm just wondering, is that reasonable? Is it unreasonable? You know, where does?
I can't speak to that one in particular, but most of them haven't been changed for multiple years. Like, we're talking 15 or more years. But Preston might be able to.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Yes, on that particular one for the shelter rentals, a couple of things. It hasn't been changed for sure as long as I've worked here. So 20 years plus. And then we also compared to like Hutchinson, New Ulm, Wilmer, I don't know, there's probably five of them. Our new fee will still be considerably lower than their current fee. So, but we didn't want to go. We are, we considered going up even more than that. But we thought if we're going to, let's start with, it looks like more when you say 100% versus $25. But we thought it'd be a decent.
Well, it gets the point across. It's 100%, double.
Yep, yep. But, you know, events are getting larger. We go in and clean and wash them out. $50 certainly doesn't go far, but it's still service to the community.
Got it. Thank you, Preston. Appreciate it.
Well, Preston's up here. Any other questions for Preston?
I think, Councilman Meister, I think I was one that brought it up, that the staff should go through these and look at, because of our wage and wages and stuff, everything has gone up. And we haven't really changed any of these for a number of years. So I'm not saying the city needs to make money, but we should at least try and recover some of our costs. And most of it has with tent setups and shelter rental and whatever the case would be. And one of the other things that I, I think that Director of Public Safety, Jim Marshall, we could never prosecute because we didn't have anything in there about vandalism. And I see, we, I missed the Ways and Means because I wasn't feeling well. But we do have that in there now. So if we have vandalism in the parks or someplace, we can actually take them to court, Jim? Or we have something to stand on?
All right. This is, I'll try and make this short. So we've had vandalism in the past, clearly, as you guys are aware. We've actually went to court twice over vandalism charges and lost both times because we don't have anything specifically called out. So then earlier this summer, I think I talked to Dennis and I just asked, you know, if we specify that in the fee schedule, do we have a, at least maybe a better chance?
Yep.
And I think we do, but maybe we still won't. But that's, that's why when the people are caught, you know, we got cameras everywhere. We catch the people even admit to it and we still can't do anything about it because we don't have anything saying. They say it's part of our normal job duties to clean up vandalism. It's just what we should be doing.
At least you got a 50/50 chance now.
Yeah. Yep. So, so that, that's why it's in there.
Okay. Thank you, Preston. Any other questions on the fee schedule?
I had a couple of questions. The first one, and it'll be for you, Quentin. Charging out a fireman, I see they raised that for a service up to $25 an hour, which seems very reasonable, by the way. Seems really low, actually.
Yes, we upped it from 1750 it was.
Firefighters make more than that, as you know, especially our, some of our more experienced or more educated, that we've taught obviously different things. So we're just trying to get it to a spot where I can get it to, keep it there for a couple of years and it likely would come back in the future. So I'm not here to make piles of money on firefighter services, but it's just recovering costs, just like Councilman Russ Lebat said. Yeah, because 25 wouldn't even cover their costs. We figured in the worker comp's cost, would it?
I mean, an additional $5 per hour on top of what they make. The, the highest-paid firefighter makes $20.33 or something right now.
I thought their worker comp rate was over 100%, which would double that wage.
I can't speak to what that cost is, Councilman. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I just look at that, that we're, that, to me, is way undervalued on that one.
We can make it whatever it's, it's, whatever you guys want, essentially, but that was the first starting point.
So that, I did, that should be revisited. But it is a service, so I understand that, that we don't want to rip people off. And the second one I have actually was for Jim Marshall, it was a lockout. And we jumped that from 35 to 50. And the reason I actually called Russ on that one, the reason I looked at that one is that affects more of our lower-income people because every one of us probably sitting in this room have vehicles that cannot lock with their keys in them. We're fortunate enough to have all the Ford vehicles like that. There are people out there, they accidentally locked their keys in their car. They're, they don't have new cars, so they can't necessarily afford it. And it's a good service. It's a good community service to offer to folks. So I thought, what was the reason raising that from 35 to 50? When it's, it's a community outreach program that costs money. And it does affect, and I always advocate, it does affect our lower-income citizens with older vehicles. None of my vehicles I can lock the keys in because I have dump-proof vehicles. I do. So I just wonder if we could lower that one back to 35 to, no comment on that Schaefer. So we keep that at 35 as a service to them because those folks probably also don't have insurance to cover that fee either.
They better have insurance. They're supposed to have insurance.
No, no, they don't have insurance to cover that. Like, you can have lockout.
Liability won't cover that.
Sure.
Have roadside insurance. You pay extra for roadside insurance.
I think, again, through Ways and Means, we realize that we haven't adjusted those fees for, that's been there for 20 years, I bet. At least 20 years that we haven't adjusted that. So it's just trying to bring things up a little bit more to where they should be. I know that if you went to a different community or even if you looked at maybe some of the private industries that would provide that service, probably minimum of 70 to 100 bucks to unlock a vehicle.
Correct. That's why I call it a customer service. Where somebody's from out of town here for a hockey tournament, they say, well, that's quite a service. I don't move Marshall. Service offering more than.
Just so you know, for, in certain situations, we have a little discretion. If it's an emergency situation, a child locked in the car, we don't charge for those services.
Do you not?
Or if we could tell the people really can't afford to pay the lockout, I think our officers use pretty good field discretion on that.
Right. We have, we have some options.
Thank you, Jim.
There's another option, too. A lot of police departments absolutely will not do that service because of the liability. And then you're, you know, I mean, you can always call a pulver, you know, pulver will do unlock. Or you can go buy a window punch for $3 and open your own car. Then you can put cardboard in the window.
Any other questions on the, on the fee schedule? Now, you have the recommendation from staff.
Move approval.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? Now, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Move then to the next agenda item, agenda item number 27. Consider the approval of the city engineer, of a city engineer for the engineering department. Sheila Dubbs, our human resource directors, here to present this item. Sheila?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening, Jason and I will work together to explain this item. We're proposing the addition of a civil engineer position in our engineering department. Our former assistant city engineer submitted a resignation in late June. And unfortunately, even though we were able to post the position immediately, the recruitment efforts have not been successful in trying to replace someone in that position. It's been nearly six months since the position was first posted and we have no qualified applicants to date. Staff are proposing to hire a civil engineer in lieu of an assistant city engineer. I did include the job descriptions for both positions in your background material so that you could compare. The city engineer, excuse me, the civil engineer job description is written to be more entry-level. It would require a bachelor's degree, but it does not require the prior experience in engineering to qualify for the position. Our assistant city engineer, we had been looking at an experienced engineer with a PE licensure and five years of experience. So this reduces that and brings it more into an entry-level position. Our goal would be to hire and train a candidate that desires to become licensed as a professional engineer. And then once that PE licensure is obtained, the candidate would be qualified to be promoted to our existing assistant city engineer position. The newly-developed job description for our civil engineer was evaluated by Gallagher for a DBM rating. And I've shown that along with the corresponding wage ranges in your background memo. As well, I've also included the both current and proposed organizational charts in materials so that you can see the supervisory structure that we are proposing. If the recommendation is approved, we'd like to keep the assistant city engineer position posted and at the same time would initiate recruitment for a civil engineer position. We'd like to keep the assistant city engineer posted just in case, timing-wise, there's an applicant that wishes to apply for that position. Both positions would close once we have one of the positions filled. So we, if, if someone would apply for assistant city engineer, and we would hire into that, both positions would close. We did bring this to the personnel committee in early November. Two members of that committee were able to meet on this item and did recommend approval to the city council. I think at this point, I'll turn it over to Jason and see if he has anything he wishes to add.
Thank you, Sheila. You know, I don't know if I have a whole lot to add. I can just be here to help answer questions, but have had a void in the department for quite some time. And I'm just really excited to try to find a candidate to help us out.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Sheila. Questions?
Jason, just a question. When we're looking for these, for this position, we've advertised on our city Facebook page and see, have we contacted, I'm sure we've contacted the schools in the area, Brookings or Minneapolis or whatever the case is, Wisconsin or anything?
Yeah. So we haven't, we haven't really advertised with the schools for the assistant city engineer position because fresh out of college, students wouldn't really apply. They, they wouldn't meet the minimum criteria. So we haven't really done that. Trying to think of all the places we've advertised. I know we've, we've looked at some other states.
I have a listing of those.
Excuse me, would we do that if we, if with the civil engineer, would we contact the schools?
Yes.
Yes, we would.
Okay.
I think it's a really cool opportunity. And to get somebody entry-level and train them and keep them. It's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea. But the one question I have is, is we get them all trained then and they get licensed, boom, they take off. Is there a way we could sign a contract after they get licensed? Not that I'm asking for like, they're obligated to us for two years. Is that something that can be worked into a contract or not?
The other way to look at that is you have someone that their first professional job out of, after getting their degree, they'll become comfortable with the community and may want to stay in the community for a career.
You hope, you hope that, but it's encouraging if you can lock them in for two years. I think you, they get deeper roots then.
And I think, and I think that's a great point, Jim. And I looked at that and going back and looking at the schedule and then to have them promote up to the assistant city engineer. And I think we're a competitive employer now. After we've had the, the compare, you know, the, reevaluates the positions and have done our, you know, salary restructure, I think that, I think we're a, an employer of, of choice for the most part. And, I mean, I think we, you know, you always gotta take your chance on that. But, I mean, I think we're, I think we're a very welcoming community, especially when you consider all of the, you know, the positives. I mean, I think, sort of somebody that just absolutely has to live in a large urban area, I think Marshall's pretty attractive and I'm willing to take the chance on that. I think it's a good idea. And I love the idea of bringing somebody in and, and kind of training them and mentoring them through our program.
Yeah, if I can just add, I think that we do have opportunity to keep someone for a longer period of time with the way we would be structured because there is the ability to move into the assistant city engineer position once you've gained the necessary experience. And, you know, if you're just out of school, you do need to work for four years under a licensed professional before you can take the professional exam. So you have that four years before you can even take the exam to have the PE. And then you probably need to work a handful of years before you're really hireable for someone else, right? So I think that we have the ability to hopefully retain people or someone for, for quite a long time if the fit is right.
So under that math, seven, eight years before this person, and not saying they would leave, but you're looking at seven, eight years before they would really be marketable themselves.
Hopefully, hopefully. And you'll never keep anyone guaranteed. They, they may want to jump to a different opportunity. But I think this gives us the ability to keep someone for a long time.
Any other questions?
I would be just a little bit cautious about requiring a commitment of a candidate. I think our engineering department, as Jason said, is welcoming, inclusive. And I think that we have opportunity now for growth that we didn't have with our prior assistant city engineer. So those are all very attractive components to the position. But if we get a candidate perhaps that is not the best fit for us, either for the candidate or for us, I would want an opportunity also to, to separate, too, if we want to. So hopefully we get the right candidate the first time and we can grow that person and keep that person. That's, that's the goal.
Any other questions?
Just a question to probably to Sharon. With, with the lack of this position being filled, how does that affect our relationship with MMU? And because we provide engineering services to MMU. I mean.
Well, it's probably more a question for Jason. But I would assume that we're backfilling it with you, Jason. I know you have taken on more. And we have done some outside contracts as well to backfill some of what Jesse did. But you might be able to answer that better.
Yeah. No, that's a, it's a good question and a good comment. You know, I think our relationship with MMU is really strong. I think that the services that we provide to them have not fallen off over the last six months. I think that, you're correct, that the intent is that they pay us some money to help cover that assistant engineer position. But really, the ultimate goal is that we provide to them an engineering service that they can rely on, and that hasn't changed. So I think that we're in a good spot. And when we hire this next person in, I think it, it still maintains what we've been trying to do. I can reach out to Dave Shelkoff to make sure that he agrees and that there's nothing that needs to be changed.
And I should add, we did discuss that at our partnership meeting that was held in November, I believe.
End of October.
And at that time, MMU and Dave certainly concurred, concurred on their appreciation for the service they're getting.
Yeah. And the other reason I bring it up, I don't, we don't want to burn you out either. So, I mean, we just assume if we have to hire outside services to help them. But because if we keep doing all these things, you, you're gonna get fried out, too, eventually.
Yeah. You know, I think that it's really important that we continue to work closely with MMU. That's number one priority. And giving us the ability to hire this position would be a great help to me.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
By, was it Craig? Or, motion by Craig?
It was actually Dark Meister.
Motion by Steve.
It's okay.
Seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. So agenda item number 28 is the Batumina's overlay on various city streets. We have a change order, the final change order, as well as the acknowledgement of the final pay request. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Our annual Millen overlay project, this is the final payment. I think in the packet, there's the title sheet, which shows the routes. And then we've also listed them in the memo. Budget was $625,000 in public, local dollars, plus $60,000 from the wastewater fund for some work on their property. The total amount on the project was $650,476.48. When you subtract out wastewater's total there, we are under the general fund budget of $625,000 by a little over $30,000. We came in at $593,000 and some odd dollars. So project was, went well, in my opinion, and we would recommend to make the final payment.
Questions, Steve? Motion?
Just, Jason, I don't know. I just shouldn't have to bring it up in public meeting, but Wes Thomas wasn't listed on this sheet. Did they forget to charge us for Wes Thomas?
No, I guarantee that we. No, I guarantee that we paid for everything that we got.
Okay, well, yeah. I was going to say, don't bring it up till done it, but.
Right. Second. So Steve, you made a motion.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? To a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the South First Street-Greeley reconstruction. Once again, the change order, the final change order, acknowledgement of the final pay request. Once again, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. South First Street project from George Street to Greeley, also included Greeley Street from College Drive to Saratoga and a block of Williams between Maple and George Street. It was a complete reconstruction, all utilities, street, sidewalk, driveways. Once again, it was a good project. I think we had a good construction season, and the contractor did a great job. Final change order, which is the reconciling change order and final payment here, total contract amount was $1,641,503.05, which is a little under $6,000 below the original contract amount. Can you answer any questions? If there are any, we would recommend to make final payment.
Questions? Again, this was a good project and went well, a good contractor, so move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. Passes. Moving on then to Agenda Item Number 30, Consider the Agreement for Legislative Services with the firm Flaherty and Hood. I'll call on Sharon Hansen, City Administrator.
Okay. The first day of session is January 3, 2023. We did not succeed with our legislative sales tax request from last year. The legislature adjourned without passing a tax bill, and we've had a small discussion at our last work session about proceeding with Aquatic Center, and talked about land purchases and things like that, but we also need to have that funding source, and that would be the intention of this particular contract, is to have Flaherty and Hood assist with us to achieve that. It does mean, in January of 2023, the council would, once again, see a resolution that's required by state statute requesting sales tax authorization. And it was a request and suggestion by our Legal Legislative Services contract provider, Marty Seifert, to really initiate this contract sooner rather than later. They do start meeting fairly soon and prior to January 3. So you did have a copy of the contract in the packet. The fiscal impact is $19,000, and just for historical perspectives, the previous contract, which was last year, was $17,005, so small increase. And I know that, in comparison to some of the other Legislative Services contracts we looked at, it's, it's, it's very kind to Marshall. I know that Marty has commented is that, because he lives in the community, get a break on the cost. But I'll pause there, and possibly council members or the mayor has more to add.
Okay. Are there any questions about this proposed agreement?
I just have a couple comments. It's not, we had support of both of our legislators, and I believe this had support into the tax bill.
It was in the tax bill.
It just never got passed. It never got, in my opinion, our legislators up in St. Paul did not get their jobs done.
There'll be, there's additional work to do this year because of the flipping of both the legislative bodies. They'll have to find new authors. So I think that's the groundwork that Marty could do now before the session starts, so a lot of legwork, really, that he does.
But unfortunately, this is $19,000 we have to spend. If they would have done their jobs last year, we would not be spending. So I just, that frustrates me, because it's money that does not have, should not be being spent, but we have to do it.
Any other questions about the agreement? If not, is there a motion to approve the agreement with Flaherty and Hood?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. To the next agenda item, the next two agenda items, 31 and 32, are related. The first would be the, consider the resolution adopting the tax levy for 2023, and then the following resolution would be, consider adopting the 2023 budget, which would be supported in part by the 2023 tax levy. So the council and staff have worked on this since last summer and brought this then to the Truth in Taxation hearing where it was presented, and then it now comes for action this evening. I'll call on Sharon Hansen first, and E.J. Moberg will also be part of this discussion to lead this discussion from the staff levels. Sharon Hansen, City Administrator, and E.J. Moberg, Director of Administrative Services. Sharon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you stated, we had many meetings on this topic, and each year, we must adopt a levy in the budget. I want to extend appreciation to E.J. Moberg, Director of Administrative Services, who did a lot of detailed work on all the numbers, and I know he thoroughly enjoyed it as well, but it was good to have those numbers. Carla Drown, Finance Director, also did a lot of input on the line items, worked with staff, puts together CIP, as you know, that she also plays a part in the fee schedule. And then, Dave Parson, our City Assessor, especially this year, had a lot of questions and valuations, and did some really, really good work on presenting that information and some comparables. So I appreciate all the work staff has done. Little bit on the comparables, we're middle. When we did comparison, we're in the middle in terms of tax rate, and we're in the middle when we look at comparable levies. We have begun to look at some other cities that have adopted their levies. The stories are the same in terms of impacts, personnel costs, retaining staff, health insurance, which actually, we did fairly well with, and then just maintaining services with other revenue staying relatively splat. Two final items before I turn it over to E.J. One of the things we look at, at staff, is not only just 23, but 24, 25. And I think this levy, why it is higher than we really want it to be, and it's a really tough decision for council, it doesn't use reserve funds, which, you know, that's probably about 2% right there. We've been using reserve funds the last two or three years. So structurally stable, more stable budget than prior years, and it does help us for 24, 25. And so I like to say that it's not fun to do this type of work, and especially for you, you got to answer to constituents, but it's honest. It's an honest budget and levy, so I want to convey that. And at TNT, we had some comments about valuations and impacts across the state and what we should do as city staff, and then, of course, as you as elected officials. Senator Deames, Representative Swodenski, depending on the weather, we'll have a legislative forum on Thursday morning. Staff will be there. We're going to talk about valuations and other property tax implications, and I know some of you probably will do the same. So we did listen, and we're going to help convey that message for the taxpayers who did show up at TNT. So I will turn it over to E.J. to present and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. So what is, in the packet includes a resolution for the levy, which would be at 8.1%. Just, again, a brief recap, back in August, we started a 13.2% increase over what was approved for 2022. Worked that down for the preliminary levy. That got approved at 9.04, and then we're here today at 8.1%. Any questions or comments? We've had a number of work sessions on it.
Thank you, E.J. Questions that the council has?
I guess I'm just going to state my personal opinion. We know that every member of this council sitting up here, we knew that the class and comp study was going to cost us money this year. It added about, E.J., the number you gave me, I think, was about $360,000, roughly 4.39%. So if you take a look at that, that could be about half of the levy increase of 8.10. Looking at that, you know, and I'm going to take, I think we could do a better job as council. I think we could do a better job as staff, and we have something like this, and class and comp study is going to come around every five years. I think that's something that we really can't control, that class and comp study, but we can control some other expenses. And I think we need, as far as I know, we need, we as a council need to give better direction to the city, the city administrator, city finance, and administrative services. We need to give them a better direction, because this, starting out at 13, I think the number originally started out, I think Sharon had said it was over 20% before they got it down to 13. You know, I think what I'm saying, that we need to give better direction. We need to give better direction to our staff in saying, this is going to be a tough year. We need you to hold the line if you don't think you need it, or whatever the case should be. We try, got to hold the line. But, you know, when I was working, you know, the corporation that I worked for, they always came down and said, your budget, try and hold it to 3% to 5%, and then if you need something extraordinary or out of the ordinary, you know, let us know. You know, if the air conditioning went down, you know, they would approve that, or if we needed a new roof, they would approve that. But they gave us guidelines to act on our budget, and I'm not sure we, as a council, do that. We, as a council, are sitting here, and we have many, many meetings, and staff does a great job of presenting all this stuff to us, but we, as a council, I don't believe ever tell them, say, hey, can you keep the levy to about X%? I could be wrong, but I think in future years, I mean, maybe that's something that we have to look at. This year, again, like I said, the class and comp study is really about half of the increase. If we didn't have that, would we have an 8.10% increase? That's my question. You know, health insurance, Sharon, I agree with you. It could have gone up 11% because that was the max. It could have gone up a lot higher, you know, than 8%, so we were very fortunate. Next year, you know, who knows what it's going to go up? Maybe it's going to go up 20%, and, you know, and future councils are going to have to deal with that health insurance and take a look at it. And how do you control that? I don't think there's any control. I do want to applaud the city staff, because it's always tough putting this together. Not using reserve funds is a positive, you know, not spending the stuff that we've reserved on. But I just think that, you know, I think we just need to be more, what should I say? Not informed, but more informative or direction, giving direction to the city, because they do do a great job of putting this together. This is my fourth year of this, and then, and Bob, you've been doing it for 30 years, so I applaud you, but, you know, it's, I think it's time that we maybe give them some direction, you know? It's not an open checkbook. I wish it was, you know? But, you know, and whether that direction is 20%, 10%, 5%, whatever, I think it's a number that the city council could give direction to the city administrator, city staff, to move forward. Just my personal opinion only.
Right. And I think, and Craig, you have a comment, but I think it's important to point out, it's really a zero-based budget. I mean, we start with the budget, what are our costs, and then build the budget from there. So it's not starting from the top, setting a, you know, here's what the percentage is. It's looking at what are our actual needs, what are the costs, and what is the city needed for city services? Craig?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Councilman Labatt, I understand where you're going, but I think you're doing an injustice to the committees that meet and do their work with the city. You sit on one of them, the PINT, and I think that we give good direction to the city. And I think that we look at our capital improvement plan, we pick our priorities as a council. Our engineering, our Public Works Department puts together some really good bids, or, you know, some good steps or stats to go out for bid, puts a good project together. We're also incorporating that with our public utilities needs for infrastructure that's under the street. When we do those major projects, we've also looked at taking things off of special assessment and putting them more on the general fund, and we've moved it, you know, attempt to move that direction. That costs money, that goes off the levy. We sat through the equipment committee. We took advantage of some really good bonding and some good pricing, and looked at our equipment and how we turned them out to get good return when we're done using something, so that we're getting the most value with spending the least amount of money. We went into the enterprise thing, because the council agreed that we needed to do some discipline on getting the best value, taking advantage of public purchasing, units of government purchasing pricing, and then turning that around. And I think we all agreed that we could have said, we could have done that for less money if the council has the stick-to-it-ness to build a plan and stay with it, but the enterprise, the enterprise agreement forced us to do that. Even though it costs us a little bit more money, we're getting the best advantage of purchasing new vehicles when they're available at a lower price, and then getting good money for them when we're done and turning out a decent vehicle. So I think we give our staff very good direction. Do I like an 8.1? No, I'd prefer a 3, but today doesn't let us do that. So my question back is, is what would we cut? You know, we, we want to, we want to do unlocks for free, but we don't want to charge somebody $50 to register a rental property. That's their business. You know, it's a commercial property. So which one don't you want to do? Which one do you want to do? I think 8.1's a really good, that's a really good budget, and I applaud staff, but I get your point, but there's a counterargument to that point, too.
And I agree with that, Craig, but I also did say the staff did a great job.
Yes, you did.
Please don't tell me that I did.
No, but you implied, you implied that the council doesn't do our work, and I take great offense, and we do a good job.
Starts with us.
We do a good job.
John?
I was just going to say, you know, this is probably my 14th time going through this, and I think every time, honestly, I've heard the same thing, that, oh, we got to have it lower, we got to have it lower. And yes, it's always good to have lower. What I've always lived or believed in is that, one, we have a mission to do for this community, and the money needs to follow that mission. We need to take on projects that, you know, a normal business doesn't have to worry about. We need to do a road. We need to plow snow. We need to take care of an airport, do a number of things like that. And those don't always come around at the most convenient times, just like anybody else with a home, that, you know, a repair job isn't always the most convenient time to have your furnace go out or have to redo a driveway or something like that. And we suffer from the same thing. I think we've, as a council, in each time, have gone through, you know, we go through this step by step. Do we need this? Do we want it this year? Yes, we have to do this. Now's a good time to do this, because next year, it's going to cost us more. You know, I think we've had those discussions each time on equipment we purchase, on the roads we fix. You know, we talked before, we've got about 80 miles of roads. They last about 40 years, so we should be doing, on an average, about two miles of road or better a year, and that's, you know, just the nature of the size of the community. So I understand, you know, everybody's saying, you know, 8.1% increase over what we had last year, as far as an increase, is a little bit of playing at percentages again, but, you know, this is a good budget. We've gone through it. We've, as a council, we reviewed it. We've cut out things that we needed to cut, but on the other hand, we can't constantly kick the can down the road. We can't constantly pull from reserves, and we've got to, you know, take a stand on it and remember that this is the mission of the community. We are building a community here, and we're maintaining a community, and that doesn't come free, so.
The other point that I would add is our tax rate is actually lowering.
That's right.
Our tax levy percent is increasing, but that reflects the increase in the tax capacity in the community. Other comments? Jim?
The only other comment I would make, and the staff did a wonderful job. As a business owner, everything's got to be a lot tighter. And I'm business-heavy in real estate, and I made the comment, one of my biggest expenses is property taxes. You know, you say where you can cut. I've talked to Sharon, there's options I have. They didn't work, that's fine. I believe we could have got a little lower. So again, you guys did a wonderful job, in my opinion. The thing I do want to bring up, and maybe Dave, you can touch on this, help out, and I want to publicly say it, and I hope the paper puts it in the paper, there is, if your taxes, is it 12%? Go up more than 12%? There is a state rebate, and I just want to get that out there more than anything, that there is, if your property taxes increase by more than 12%, correct in saying that?
taxes increase by more than 12%, correct in saying that?
And $100.
And $100, there is a rebate. If you do your taxes on TurboTax, that does not show up. I believe, Dave, you said there's a half a million dollars in rebates in Lyon County alone that were left on the table last year. So just throw that out there, that if your taxes go up, please apply for that rebate because that does help offset this increase. I've said that many times, and I'll say it all until tax season.
And Jim, that's a great point on that, because one of the reasons why people are getting a higher hit is as their property values go up, they're losing that homestead credit. And if you look, what's the surplus now, 13?
17.6 billion.
17 billion dollars, state surplus. Point six, 17 points, almost 18. That's one way of getting that back that we've lost in the homestead credit, is to go back and apply for that rebate. Thank you, Jim. And I think you can actually go back for next year also, correct? I think you can capture years up through August.
I believe you're correct.
Yeah. But your tax people should be able to help you with that. So if you're not sure to get counsel.
But that does not show up on TurboTax.
Maybe Deb, you could, there's, could be a link that you could put in the story and, yep.
We're putting it on you, Deb.
Okay, any other, any other input? If not, you do have, the action before us would be the resolution that would adopt a tax levy for 2023.
I move the resolution adopting the tax levy for 2023 at $8,178,954, which reflects an increase from 2022 of 8.10%.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
I will second.
Seconded by John. Discussion on the motion. If not, we'll move to a vote on the motion. And we'll close the voting. And the motion, yours doesn't show up.
The color never shows up. It is a yay.
Okay, the motion does pass, okay.
There it is.
All right, thank you. We'll then move to Agenda I of number 31, Consider the Resolution that will adopt the tax levy that would be supported in part, or excuse me, that resolution adopting the budget that will be supported by, in part by the tax levy. So move. Motion by Craig, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll now move then to Agenda I of number 33, Consider the Approval of the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Sharon, do you want to start with this, or who?
We typically do also adopt a five-year CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, following the levy and budget adoption. This again was reviewed by staff and council. We have obviously set up forth next year and future year funding. And we've discussed today, just to again give further review possibly, you know, at the start of 2023, reviewing the upcoming year with a capital equipment review committee and infrastructure, PINT, just to review the upcoming year. But I will turn over to EJ to add any additional discussion to this.
I would interject at this point, the, you know, this is a multi-year capital plan. So especially with two new council members coming on, it would probably be a good idea for a work session for the entire council sometime early in 2023 to really focus on the CIP. Some additional comments you have?
Just wanted to point out that the CIP was last addressed during the work session on November 22nd. Since then, as noted in, in the memo, there were a couple of changes from the draft seen previously, just changes in what, what things were accounted for. For example, one of the changes deals with, on the first page of the CIP, the parking lot upgrade was elsewhere within the plan to be paid for by different types of funds. Now it is moved here, so that 250 that got moved to the bonding levy impact. And the other change is, if you go to page, go to page two for me, Stephen, of the next one, that bonding surface water revenue in the past was, was planned to be, be paid out of cash. However, after the project itself was reestimated, the total cost was going to be more than we could pay out of cash. So we're looking at potential bonding for now. That's what's on here under bonding as well. So those are the two changes that have been made since November, as we did some estimates within staff of where things are at.
Okay. Questions were either EJ or Sharon. If not, entertain a motion for approval of the five-year capital improvement plan. So moved. Motion by Steve.
I'll second.
Seconded by Amanda. Discussion?
EJ, just a question. How did, did we ever decide if we're going to pay things off and bond or, because I know we talked about that at one council meeting, with the liquor store funds, I believe, whether we're going to pay the liquor store off or?
Sure. I believe the direction I had moving forward was that we were going to make our normal payment, but not pay it off yet as we evaluate options.
And then use some of the money?
So it's potential that we might, some of these items on here might, might be paid out of liquor store cash or something like that for a short period.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Well, the only other discussion I have is, because we approved the five-year CIP, doesn't put this in stone. This is, can still be a fluid.
Correct, absolutely. Yep.
Our priorities, they're not commitments.
Right. Thank you, Craig, yep.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. Motion passes. Agenda I of number 34, Consider Approval of Community Services Department Reorganization. I'll call on Sharon Hansen, City Administrator.
Okay. You know, we are always in a state of continual process of improvement. And each time we look at the organization, we're looking at ways to, to make adjustments to improve. And I can just kind of review some of the things we've done. 2018, we made adjustments in our building inspection department, now called community planning. We made adjustments in 2018, going into 2019 with our finance department. We also had changes in our division director leadership positions in 2018. We had a change in our public safety director, who then subsequently made quite a few structural changes in his organization in the most recent last two years. And we had a change in our public works director in 2020. So lots of change happening in the, in the leadership positions in the city of Marshall. So recently, administration took a review on of community services division and how best to meet the future, future goals of the division. And I am recommending organizational changes and characterizing this as a reorganization. It will flatten the structure of the community services division. There are positions now that'll be accountable directly to the city administrator, including a park and recreation director and community head director, and then our media communications specialist. And belief that there will be efficiency created. The job description reviews will be following council action. We didn't want to put a ton of discussion and time in job description review until we got consent of council with this action tonight. And as part of this organizational review and reorganization, the, the community services director position was deemed not necessary. So the recommendation is to approve the community services reorganization as presented. You do have the organizational structure charts contained herein. And make that with an effective date of January 1, 2023. Eliminate the community services director position with the termination of the incumbent in the position of community services director effective December 16, 2022. And I can answer any questions on the structure charts, current and future. And I will pause and, and turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Sharon. We'll put up for questions from the council. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I just had one question. I talked to Sharon about this today. I, I didn't totally agree with the recreation coordinator being responsive to the park and rec, director because, park and recreation director, because the fact of, he's, he's busy enough the way it is. He's been busy, extremely busy every year. I mean, he goes, he does 12 months of work in four and a half months, and, and just add that position to him, to be responsible for that position, just doesn't make any sense to me. But that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Russ. Other questions?
Just not really a question, just a comment. You know, we did talk about this in the past in, in discussion with personnel, but really with the city administrator, the number of direct reports that you have is still within a reasonable number, but just kind of, you know, a caution to not get to exceed that by much, or we're going to have a problem of city administrator burning out as long of, as well as maybe an engineer, so, a city engineer. So we got to, we got to really watch those and make sure that we keep some of that delegation going. I think you can, you know, well-suited to handle it, but just, you know, kind of a caution for future.
Yeah. Well, the, the span of control is 10 to 11, meaning direct reports and the ability to effectively manage. And the current and future structure stays below that. And then, you know, early on in the structure, there was supervision already of an executive assistant, liquor store manager. That's been, one position was not refilled, director of administration oversees liquor stores. So there's been some release of those direct reports over time. And so we are still in an effective span of control. But I appreciate the comments, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Craig.
Also along those same lines, as I, when I first looked at the, at the proposed in the current org charts, I had kind of similar concern about span of, span of control, span of report. But I believe if I'm reading this correctly, the administrative assistant that currently resides under the director of community services would then be that administrative assistant that would go under the city administrator, that position?
That is correct.
All right. So that, that's an added buffer, I think, to kind of help cover the day-to-day things.
Right. Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass to one extension. We'll move then to Agenda I of number 35, Commission Board Liaison Reports. For my part, the Southwest Regional Development Commission did have their monthly meeting this past Thursday evening. The major focus of this meeting was the presentation by Southwest Tourism, which has their administrative services provided by the Southwest Regional Development Commission. And I think the, the opportunity is to really explore their efforts in conjunction with our local tourism through Visit Marshall and, and Convention Visitors Bureau. So I'll have that discussion with Cassie and Adri. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only one really, I think, of, of note is the Airport Commission met. And one of the kudos items that I want to put on there is, is that the crack ceiling that was approved by MINDOT Aviation and the funding was extremely effective this year with the, our public works has their own crack ceiling capabilities now and have been doing the work out there. And I, from what I understand, it's, it's gone very well. I haven't actually walked on the runway because I don't think I'm cleared to do that. But by the, the pilots that fly on and off, that, that sit on the, on the board, on the commission, were very positive about the work that's done. So I just want to say that I really appreciate the focus. And I, I think that airport goes very under-recognized in the community about what an asset it really is and the amount of, of jobs that it creates. I know that just the fixed base maintenance facility still gathers aircraft from a really long distance. And it's pretty amazing how much work, high-level work goes on out there and what an asset that is for the region. And, and I just really appreciate our oversight that the city has with it and that the service at the airport gives to the, to the corporate and the private aviation in the community and in the region. So other than that, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing more.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Steve?
Cable Commission did not meet. Community Services Advisory Board did meet, but because of their timing and my work schedule, I was unable to attend. And same with EDA.
Planning Commission meets tomorrow night.
And John?
MMU and EDA meet next week, do the holidays, the same with Public Housing Commission, actually meets at the end of the month this time rather than earlier on in the beginning. Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission did meet. We reestablished the Communications Subcommittee. Start off again here, we did also meet with the individual that was subjected to the, I would say pornography that was posted on his windows and doors. Just, he made an appearance to the committee and just talked a little bit about the situation and knowing that it's under investigation right now, there's really, I guess no other comments really want to do on that. And also, we're in the process of changing our bylaws, making a minor change. So there are co-chairs to the committee. And one of the changes is to make those alternating years as far as the, the rotation of co-chairs. So we're not replacing both co-chairs in the same year at some potential. That's why it makes it a little smoother operation. And also on the secretary appointments, that it's actually an appointed by the committee. And there was a couple of discrepancies in the bylaws regarding the secretary, just how that position was appointed. So that's being clarified.
Okay. Thank you, John. Russ?
Library Board met last night on a positive note, if you recall, a couple of months ago, they put their van up for sale on the state bid with a minimum bid of $4,800. And I think they got a bid of 45, and then the guy pulled out. So they reposted it, I think maybe even with Jim's staff help or something, but they sold the van for $7,175, minus the commission of 430. So they actually netted 6,744. So it's about $2,000 more than what we, what we thought we were going to get two months ago, so.
Isn't that a van like 30 years old?
It's, yeah, plus.
Thirty years, not enough.
And so that money is going to be put into a separate account to keep for future purchases of a new library van down the road. Had a very good presentation and update from a couple of, three of the librarians, Mary, Beth Sinclair, Emily Rasmussen, and Paul Anemis, and, and various things that are happening within the library. Mary Beth was very emotional about the elimination of, of visiting the childcare businesses around town, but they hope they can find some volunteers to deliver the materials to those places. One of the things that they continue to be concerned with, a few individuals coming into the library or out in the library property. I believe there was some physical alterations in, in the parking lot. And I think Jim and his staff have been aware of that. They're moving into the middle school now because I understand the middle school is getting a little be, little bit of a hornet's nest occasionally over there, so, so they're still working on that. One of the positive things for one of the staff members, before closing one night, they actually walk around the whole library and look and make sure they found an individual hiding in the Minnesota Room underneath the table. So they asked him to leave and he left, and then he, they watched him on the cameras and he ended up going into the bathroom. So then they ended up asking him to leave there. So we think maybe he was, maybe a homeless individual, but we don't know that for sure, and looking for someplace just to stay warm. So they will continue to monitor those situations. And again, the staff should be applauded for, because that young individual could have been in the library overnight. Maybe he might not have did anything, but who knows? But it's a, it's a compliment to the staff for checking the, the status of the building. CVB met. We talked about the new board members and the bylaw update, and that was all received well by all the board members. We also voted to include also voted to include $3,000 this year to Preston for an inclusive playground, and looking that maybe we can continue to make those donations as the hotel and restaurant sales tax continue to increase. So looking at maybe investing some more things around town that people, when they come to town, they can have things to do. Red Baron Arena was pretty busy with the ice dog games. I guess they, they had two or three full games that were packed to the rafters, I guess, with people, and they had very good turnout. And then the ice dogs were also here practicing at the same time. So Red Baron has been a busy place. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Jim?
I did not meet.
We'll move then to council member individual. I'm Mr. Jim, let's have a view.
Just with it being close to the holidays, I just wanted to wish people happy holidays. And from a personal experience, be kind to people, and be kind to your healthcare providers, because we gather, as Steve will tell you, and I experienced this weekend, hospitals are full of little kids that are sick, and people that, there's long waits. So just be very patient with people during the holiday season. That's all I have.
Russ?
I would just echo that with the happy holidays for, for all the listening public and our citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
John?
Can't add much more to that than just happy holidays. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, happy holidays, and be careful out there. This is some nasty weather, and travel is tough, and, you know, try to watch for your neighbors. Take care of your neighbors, help them out sidewalks, driveway clearing, that kind of stuff. Just be kind.
Can't add much more. Cleaning the sidewalks, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Cleaning the sidewalks is a big deal. I went out running, and I about slipped on three different spots.
Did you run today?
Not today.
And Amanda?
Happy holidays.
I, I just have two things to add to that. The, thanks to our street department, they've done a nice job of, it's really unpredictable what we've experienced the last 24 hours. So they've done a lot of jobs with water management and storm drain cleaning, as well as clearing the streets. So thank you for that. The other thing I'd say for the council, as well as the two incoming council members, is later this week, I'll be sending out a, a memo, and you won't get it, and you won't get it, but the rest will, about, this is the time of year when we do reorganization. So we have council committees that, that the council serves on, and we also have council, we have boards and commissions that you're liaisons to. So what this form will be is what your choices would be for second and third, as well as if there's any other board or commission that, or committee that you really don't want to serve on. Perhaps you have some personal conflict with that, or a family member that's involved with that, or whatever. So the, that will go out later this week, and then I'll have, I'll sort that all out and have that ready to go by the first of the year. With that, we'll move on to our staff report. Sharon?
I just wanted to update the council that our public safety director and our fire chief did attend the December 8 Lyon County Commissioner meeting, did request ARPA funds to help fund aerial truck, fire truck purchase, and then also grass skid units. And the council, excuse me, the, the commissioners did approve up to 200,000 in ARPA funds. So if you see a county commissioner, thank them. I think that's a really good show of support for the city of Marshall, and a good example that, you know, we do support each other, and we can get along, and things like that. So, and of course, Jim and, Jim and Quentin did a great job, too. So just wanted to update the council on that. That's all I had to add, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow at Planning Commission, we are bringing a public hearing for the comp plan. So that's exciting, that's coming to a close. We'll bring that to the council shortly thereafter. Thank you, Councilman Schaefer, for pointing out the crack ceiling at the airport. That has been really successful. We get a lot more work done with owning the equipment. So kudos to Dean Kudrin for finding that equipment this past year at a great price, and I think we've already paid it off. So just the value of work we've been able to get done instead of contract out. The dollar doesn't go very far with that work. I would just do my PSA this time of year, if you have street intakes, or yard intakes, or alley intakes near your property, it's, it's always appreciated if you kind of keep those clear, so drainage can occur, and there's not blockages. If you have a hydrant on your property, and you want to put a couple passes with a snow blower around it, that's also appreciated. Anything you can do to, to help keep those essential pieces of infrastructure available is great. And as Councilman Meister indicated, clear your sidewalks.
Jason, I feel that we should probably report a bit on our ATPA, or Area Transportation Partnership for MINDOT District 8, as well as the RACE grant. And I can start on this, and then you can fill in the details. The, so as you know, the council did authorize the submission of the RACE grant, and it's an acronym, okay, and it uses federal dollars. And MINDOT endorsed and basically selected Marshall as one of the grant applicants that would be submitted to USDOT. And USDOT then receives that grant application, and then evaluates it. And we were not approved for the RACE grant at USDOT. So MINDOT, as well as our staff, requested a, an, I'll call it an exit interview, you know, because we have an opportunity to resubmit, you know, what did we do wrong? And at that time, it was learned that when MINDOT submitted it electronically, the electronic file was corrupted, so they weren't able to open it. So it was never looked at. And unfortunately, and there was no communication back, and had MINDOT District 8 staff and Jason not requested that exit interview, they would have never known. So, so it'll be resubmitted, I think, you know, you're, you know, while a mistake happened at the USDOT level, you still want to maintain the relationships, because the new grant application goes back, and we'd like a, a do-over on that. So Jason, anything to add?
Yeah, I would just point out that, and I was a part of that meeting with the, the debriefing meeting, and our District 8 MINDOT engineer, John Hughesby, I thought, did a really excellent job of maintaining his composure. I'm sure he was, well, I know he was extremely upset that they never reached out and said, hey, would you please resubmit? You have a corrupted file. Because at the time of submission, they were able to open the documents. They don't know what happened, that, that this issue occurred. But really unfortunate, because I think they, as well as we, felt like we had a good candidate project. It'd be really important for the city and District 8 to get this funding. So I thought he did a really great job of representing not only MINDOT, but us, and expressing displeasure, while also being very positive in trying to keep the relationship where it needs to be for the next application. He did a great job, so.
So I chair the MINDOT District 8 Area Transportation Partnership, and we met last Friday, and district engineer, John Hughesby, did present that to the entire, the entire group, and the entire group is still supportive of this Marshall project. And this really would have underwritten some of the costs that would, otherwise would be local costs, as well as MINDOT costs for our Highway 19 reconstruction in 2025. It's millions of dollars, so. Thank you, Jason. Dennis?
Nothing.
Okay. The remaining items then on the agenda include the administrative briefs, the listing of building permits, the cash investments, as, as well as a listing of upcoming meetings. Is there any other item to come forward at this meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Seconded by Amanda, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.